If I could have everyone's attention, please. Call this meeting to order. Ms. Whitby, you want to call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ross?
Here.
White? Taylor?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris will be late. Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
The Corrigan is present, sir.
Thank you very much. I invite you to rise for a prayer and pledge by Councilmember Height.
That's about it for prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us together tonight, and we're ultimately thankful for your gift of your son, the reason for this season that we celebrate and honor you for that. And we pray that you will be with all of our uniform officers, policemen, firemen, be with our military, and no matter where they're at, they're out there helping to protect us and keep this country free. Forgive us of our sins, and we hope that you are pleased with everything that we thank, do, and say tonight here in this council meeting. In Jesus Christ's name, I do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Communications, one through four. Anybody want to pull any one of those? How about a motion?
Move to accept and file, one through four.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Let me make one comment on the logo for the plaza. The staff at Convention and Visitors Bureau worked long and hard and had some professional help, probably looked at 100 different designs. This is the one that they selected, and I thought it would be prudent that you guys have a chance to look at it, and if you got any, if you want to critique it, certainly do. His commission's going to meet this week, I believe, and they will approve it also. So if you've got any thoughts or anything, be sure and let me know, or let Bob Major know at the Bureau. Okay, Ms. Whitby?
No one signed to speak during public comments, so unfinished business, R-18210, Mayor Smith.
Okay, hold on a minute. Let me get to my agenda. Okay, I think over the weekend, we, the final draft, and there's been 135 of them, I think, that we looked at. Our attorney, Amy, has looked at it. Our district's attorneys looked at it. Little Rock's attorneys looked at it. Sherwood's attorneys looked at it, and I think this is the, what we've decided is the best way to go with this amendment to the original contract. So all of you have gotten copies of it, I believe, and so let's call that.
Okay. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an amendment to the agreement between the Regional Recycling and Waste Reduction District, City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, City of Little Rock, City of Sherwood, and Waste Management, Arkansas Incorporated, to extend the term of agreement for residential recycling curbside pickup services.
How about a motion? Do I have a motion?
Don't move, but I have a question.
Okay, give me a second.
Second.
All right. Ms. Ross?
On page eight, where it says that the contractor's compensation is based on the number of residential water meters, we've always based it on our electric meters.
It's always been on water.
Electric.
It depends on the electric bill, but did they count the water meters to determine how many households there are?
And then it's billed on the electric bill? That's how it's collect, okay. So it's based on water meters, but elected, collected on the electric bill? Okay.
Mr. Height?
I just wanted to clarify that, I think it's that last paragraph where, where if the laws change and countries are causing the contractor to need to raise the rates, it'd be negotiable, and it's not something that, you know, is that where y'all really kind of hammered it out right there?
Yeah, we worked that out. City of Nashville, the wording there is the same as in the contract with the City of Nashville. That basically says that in the event of a change in law, whether it be international or local or national, that we would enter into in good faith to understand their predicament and try to work with them. My question was, what if we can't work something out and agree? He said the rates will stay the same, and then we'll expire whenever the two years is up. Mr. Baxter?
Mayor, in looking at the amendment, it's been my understanding, or practice, I guess, throughout residence in my ward, that generally they will make a call to Waste Management and tell them, hey, you missed my pickup or whatever. I noticed that some of the language in here says that the call will initially be made by the city, and also, when it comes to them failing to go back and get a missed pickup, that if we end up having to do it, we as in the city, or someone for the city has to do it, that we'll deduct $50 off of the bill that they send us. So my question is, is, and just for everybody out there in TV land or whatever, or on the interwebs, if I'm missed, do I call sanitation in an effort so the city can start tracking that issue resolution, or am I to call Waste Management?
It's my understanding that you call Waste Management. Nothing's changed on that. Is that right, Craig?
Yeah. Call Waste Management, the call is preferred ultimately to the city, so I don't want to waste management.
Exactly. And we're going to work a lot harder on contamination than we've ever worked before, and the reason we're doing that is, is we've kind of gotten, where we are today is because of the extreme contamination that we have and Little Rock has. And so we're going to work on it really hard and try to educate. I'm really thinking about hiring a crew with some of that money that Waste Management's going to give us and talk to these people that are contaminating so much, because it's just in certain neighborhoods, and, you know, we know where the neighborhoods are. So we're going to do that. If we can cut that contamination down, then it's going to make it a lot easier in two years from now, when this two-year extension runs out, to possibly have more reasonable rates. Ms. White?
Mayor, I'm hearing this, and I know that education's going to be a big push for this next contract. I want to say that the first time, I discovered not too long ago that I was recycling something wrong. I didn't know. I did not know, and I went back and tried to find it, and I never did find where that was listed. And I look at this new list of specifications, and there's vagueness in this. Obviously, when it comes to the public, it's going to have some pictures or a lot more with it than just coat hangers. Does that mean plastic or wire? You know, there's things like that that are just so vague, you don't know what to do as a, you know, as a resident. And even in the households that maybe have less contamination, I think there's still room for confusion, so I hope we really focus on getting really specific so people don't have confusion over this all.
We have worked with them. We all agree that we got a little lax, that we felt that contamination was just part of every day, instead of trying to focus on it. We're, you know, Craig is here, our director, and we're waiting to get this approved. We happen to be the first one, but I think Little Rock and Sherwood are three or four days behind us in approving this. But we're going to get aggressive on our side and on the district's side, and that depends so much on Waste Management, because it's going to be hands-on, you know? So we're going to give it yeoman's effort, no doubt.
I just want other comment. When I was looking over the legislation, the past contract we had, what I think was 2011, and I was reading through that and just kind of refreshing myself a while ago, and I realized that many of the promises from Waste Management at that time weren't followed up on, and so it does give me pause that whether this one's going to be honored in the same way.
I agree. 100%.
It does make me pause.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
This is a request that I would like to make, because I know back in 2014, we sat down and could see the contamination coming at the time, and everybody just kind of fooded it off and said, it's no big deal. Trying to get the reports, that was a big thing. So these weekly reports, can the city council be copied on those weekly reports? Because I know it was like pulling teeth in 2014, trying to get any report. Because the report was sent to sanitation.
We'll be pulling teeth again.
I mean, I would like to see every single report. I mean, maybe everyone else does, and they can delete them, but...
I would be willing to bet, Ms. Ross, that you've seen every report that I've ever gotten.
Right. Oh, I'm sure.
And we've talked about that. You know, whether we're going to get it or not, I don't know, but we've certainly have asked, we've certainly held their feet to the fire, but, you know, it depends on who their regional manager is that's handling central Arkansas.
But I think one thing, if we're copied on that, at least we'll know that it's not, and we can bring that to attention, and we can at least voice our displeasure at the time, so...
You got that, Craig? We need to do everything we can do to make sure that they follow through on what they said they were going to do.
And I will be...
It's not that hard.
No.
You know, I mean, take 30 minutes and do it, you know, so...
And to put us on there takes no time at all, so...
Yeah. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion, counsel?
If somebody could amend, or propose an amendment to attach this as Exhibit A to the resolution.
I'll make that amendment.
Ms. Ross?
Second.
And second, to amend the contract in as an exhibit. All, Ms., what's your name? Whitby. Ms. Whitby?
Don't make me come over there. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris? I'm sorry, Harris, not here. Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Not a motion? And a second. Do we have a second? Second?
Second.
I still have some questions.
Okay.
Okay. Can you explain the, or maybe Ms. Fields can't, the uncontrollable changes? I mean, you know, it says, is that basically...
Is that the force majeure if there's a storm or tornado or something?
Yes.
So the applicable law, then, that is under...
They separated out a little bit the change in law in the force majeure for the hurricanes and storm events. If there's a storm event, they can be excused from picking up the routes. However, if they don't pick up the routes, then we don't pay for the period of time that the routes are not picked up.
That's correct.
On the change in law, they have the opportunity to come to us and ask for, and the other cities and the district, and ask for an increase in rates. We have an obligation to engage in good faith negotiations. However, if the parties cannot come to an agreement, then the rate will remain what it is in this amendment to the contract until the end of the term.
Okay, so, and I do see that, you know, that they can come back and, you know, they would notify the other parties or whatever to modify this contract. So if they did modify the contract due to something like that, would that come back to the council?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So any kind of, any change in foreign taxes, domestic laws, rules, whatever, it'll come back?
Any change in a contract that we approve has to go back to the council.
Okay.
On, do we have a motion? A second. On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris, this is a motion to adopt as amended the resolution regarding Waste Management.
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Craig? You know what to do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for all your help. It's been a long six months.
We appreciate the process.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Whitby?
O-1890, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance approving compensation and benefits for uniformed employees of the North Little Rock Fire Department. All readings were suspended on November the 13th.
Let me have a motion. Have a motion? Somebody?
Are they holding it?
No, we're not holding it. We have to call it. I mean, we have to call it.
Okay, motion.
Okay, I have a second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Question?
Okay. What, two council meetings ago, you held this, because you had a couple of things you needed to work out.
Right.
Am I assuming that you got those things worked out?
Well, we're closer than we've ever been in a contract.
Okay.
If that makes any sense.
It does.
You know, the fire department is sometimes difficult to work with. We thought we're where we needed to be. You know, this legislation that we're trying to pass here is exactly, exactly what we did at the police department. Exactly. It just identifies what they're getting paid today and how they're getting paid, okay? Because we don't have a contract, we have to have some sort of agreement with the city council to pay them and give them the benefits that they have. Nothing changes. And I don't understand for the life of me why they're against this. It doesn't make any sense. If we don't pass this before the end of the year, because this will be retroactive back to January...
Right.
Then any of the benefits that's on here, you know, we could have to claw them back. You know, if we're paying $100 a month for them to eat dinner, you know, and it hasn't been approved by the city council in this form, because we don't have a contract, we might have to go back in there, especially if somebody was to sue us, and say, you got to give me that hundred back, you know? And so, you know, these guys are really good salesmen, but they're not telling you the whole story on this. This does not change anything. It does, will not change their pay, will not change their benefits. I think there's one little amendment on the whole thing, but nothing, nothing changes. You know, their lawyer has given them some advice that if we approve this, that their contract is void. Well, their contract has been void for over a year, so whatever legal advice they're getting, our lawyers say that that's not true. That's not so. You know, we're going along with what we've agreed for the last two or three years, and I continue to do the same thing. But if we don't do this, we're going to end up, it's going to bite us. So, questions?
We do have an amendment from Legal concerning the sick leave during the first year.
It's on paragraph L, which is about the fifth page over. Chief Bradley got in touch with me last week. If y'all look at that, it's the sick leave provision, and it says, after the first year of employment, employees will be granted paid sick leave equal to 20 work shifts per year, and then goes on. The proposed amendment is to strike the first five words and, you know, strike out after the first year of employment. And for that sentence, just to read, employees will be granted paid sick leave equal to 20 work shifts in order that the employees get that sick leave during their first year. It's more than is required under state law, and it is consistent with the benefit that they have been given, and Chief Bradley had noted that and gone through that and asked for that to be amended to strike out those five words.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Motion made and seconded on this one amendment. Motion on...
On the motion, Ross?
Did Ms. Robinson have a question?
Sure. Oh, this is just on the amendment.
Oh, yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
My question is, so after meeting with the fire department, you all were not able to come up with a solution. So everything remains as it is.
But it's not because of that. You know, the contract is over. We do not have a contract with them. The reason, one of the main reasons that I couldn't, I completely and totally said, I'm not going to enter into a contract unless y'all change at least one of these deals. Actually, there was two. One was past practices. They wanted left in the contract that if they've been doing it this way, then it's okay to always do it this way. Well, you can't tell management that it... I said, what if we've been doing it wrong, you know? So, and then the biggest one was, they weren't willing to change in their contract that we were, we had to pay 75% of family medical coverage, and I told them that I was not going to burden our budget with that, because, you know, everybody knows what a move in target that medical care is. And so we finally reached an agreement that we would agree not to change that more than 5% per year. So if it's 75 this year, the most it could go down to would be 70 next year. And PD agreed, and so we're just working out the commas and the periods on Police Department for a two-year contract. And so Fire has told me that they thought that they could go along with this, too, and so we went back to the drawing board. They made a proposal to us, and it wasn't anything like we wanted it, and so they said, well, y'all draw it up and send it back to us. So that's something that you just can't do in 30 minutes. So we're in the process of doing that. You know, most everything that they want, I don't have a problem with, other than those two issues, and I think we've got that worked out. It's just the wording on what it says and how it says it.
And this is only good for two years?
Well, this is good forever, until we change it.
So we can come back in and change it?
Next council meeting.
In a year or two years, we can change it.
Anything we do, we can change, but yes.
If the, and I'm just, if the union and the mayor's office and the chief continue their negotiations and come up with a contract as soon as they do, it can come back before you all and be approved. This, you know, our concern is, is that the city council is responsible for approving benefit, both the compensation and the benefits for the uniformed city employees, that this contract, their previous contract has lapsed, and we want to make sure that the benefits that have been paid to them have the blessing and approval of the city council, so that there's not any question that those benefits were paid without authorization, and will continue to be paid without authorization as the contract negotiations continue.
And I know that this was stated the last meeting, the contract trumps the handbook, correct? I mean, when the contract is completed?
If, if...
If they have a contract.
If we pass this, and then we, and we do a contract in two months from now, and it changes this handbook, then we come back in and change that handbook to match the contract. Absolutely.
Right. So, I mean, the contract is the contract.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
If we pass this, does this give us any more leverage going on with the contract?
None. None. I mean, you can ask anybody that I've tried to negotiate with, I try to be fair, and sometimes negotiations don't seem to be fair, they seem to be one-sided. So I'm just trying to get us all in the middle, that it's fair to the city and to the taxpayers and fair to the firemen.
I just hadn't heard all the issues. And unlike you, I wouldn't like past practices any less.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know.
Plus the insurance. I mean, what if our insurance tripled? You know, I mean, it could. I mean, it's that crazy of a world out there, and, I mean, I know y'all read the paper and see all those, you know, what other people are paying, and paying what we pay is the Cadillac of all Cadillacs. And, you know, I hope we don't ever have to go. I have to pay it, too. So, anyway. Any other questions? Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, man, I guess, wow. So I guess I'm just confused, or maybe I'm just simple, I don't know. How did we ever get to the point where the contract, so you have a contract, you know it's going to lapse? How did we ever get to the point where the contract would, it just lapses and...
Well, the contract, I tell you, the contract was written, and I believe PD was this way, too, that it's written, and help me, counsel, if I'm saying this wrong, it's written, it says, if we don't agree to a new contract, the old contract continues, unless you give me written notice 90 days before the expiration of the contract. Well, in 2016 or 17? One of them, I can't remember now. We sent them a letter, because they wouldn't let me adjust that 75%, or at least let be able to move, so we sent them a letter that said that by the end of this year, your contract's going to expire. So whatever year that was, if it was 16 or 17, their contract expired with 90-day notice from me, and we've been unable to reach a contract with either one of them, PD or Fire, either one. But, you know, now that we've got this understanding on the insurance, that it can't, you know, their biggest argument, and I agree, you know, is they don't want surprises on their budgets, on their home budgets, and if their part is $160 a month, and then we come in and say, okay, now it's going to be 500 a month, you know, they didn't plan for that. So I agreed with that, thought it was very fair, and that all it could change would be 5%. So it would go from 75 to 70 if we had to have it, you know? We didn't get any increases so far. So, you know, we start out the year even. They agreed, and PD's all in. We passed that thing, just like, there's no difference in this one and the one we passed two weeks ago, or three weeks ago. So...
So if we, so we got to get it done by the end of the year, so if, there's no harm if it's held tonight until the next council meeting?
I don't want to hold it. There's a reason we need to pass it tonight, to give Karen three weeks to change. What are we changing? Karen, come, tell me real quick.
The new policy calls for some back leave to be credited to all employees, as if they had accrued leave all year long. It takes a minute to get all those calculations and enter it into the system. We have achieved that for police, and we have several other changes in the payroll system to take place in the next three weeks.
Yeah, so these are, and it's, it's not taking money away from them, it's just how we calculate it. So we have, this has to be approved, so that Karen's people have three weeks to get how they accrue their pay, starting in January. So their leave, okay? So, but they're getting no less leave than they were before, it's just how we do it, and it's written out in this. So that's why we need to pass it tonight. Other comments? Yes, ma'am?
The only thing is, as soon as you get the contract, we'll come back and we'll change this, correct?
Right.
Okay. Good.
On the motion.
Mayor, I don't think there's been a motion to adopt it as amended. There's just been the amendment.
About a motion to adopt as amended?
Second.
On the motion.
Okay. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson? Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Yes.
On the emergency. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I assure you that we are working in good faith to get a contract done soon.
New Business, R-18-231, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution supporting Allegiance Arts and Entertainment LLC's application for equity investment tax credits pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash four thirty-three oh one.
So, please.
How about a second?
Second.
Questions, comments on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-18-232, Mayor Smith.
Let me, let me go back a little bit. Allegiance Arts and Entertainment LLC is very exciting. And we're so glad you're here, and, um, we wish you great success. Okay.
Mayor, where they gonna be located?
They're, they are looking for a location right now. We, we toddored them, and, and hopefully they'll make us, uh, soon. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
R-18-232, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Well, uh, here we go. A resolution approving acceptance by the North Little Rock Airport Commission of a grant from the Arkansas Department of Aeronautics for the construction of an apron for future hangar development project.
So, please.
How about a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-18-233, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter to agreement with Hofer Wissowski Architects LLC for architectural and engineering design services and construction administration for the police and courts building.
How about a motion?
I have a question. I'll, and I'll, I'll make the motion, but I have a question though.
How about a second?
A second.
Question?
Okay. This thirty million is, uh, is the new projected cost of, uh, the police and courts building down, uh, on, uh, Popper Street, correct?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
All right. And this resolution that we're passing tonight is for the, uh, for the services of the architect, not to exceed seven point seven percent of the actual cost, right?
That's correct.
Now, and at this point in time, we don't, do we, at this point in time, we expect that the total cost is gonna be thirty million to include the architect. And we hadn't even, we hadn't even dug the first shovel full of dirt down there.
You're right.
What if we come up next summer and we're another ten million dollar short?
Well, it's been my decision to, um, hard bid this. And, um, so, once we, uh, get the drawings done, we're gonna do a hard bid. And it won't be, uh, construction manager, subject to change orders, or anything else. Of course, you know, anytime you have a contract, you're gonna be subject to change orders. Um, so, that's my intent. You know, you know, blame it on me if you choose to. It did get confusing on the plaza. We will make sure, whatever we did, if, to get everybody confused, we won't make that mistake again. And these, the first, the first architects we had, uh, were projecting this number to be closer to forty. And then, we got involved with this architect out of Kansas City, who, they're huge, and they build a tremendous amount of police and courts buildings. And their number with, we've, we've, from eighty-five thousand square feet down to fifty-five thousand square feet. And their best guess on, on past, uh, performances that they've had in the past twelve months, they think that we can do it for under thirty million, all-inclusive. So, uh, what this does is it gives me permission to sign a contract with them so that they can start drawing this, um, so that we can get to a point where, uh, we can hard bid it. And then, we'll know for sure what the cost is gonna be. Okay.
Definitely, when you say hard, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This company is out of Kansas City. Were there not any companies locally that could've done this job? Where the money could've stayed in the state of Arkansas?
They are partners, uh, with a Little Rock firm of, can't remember the name of Little Rock firm. Uh, we didn't have very many architects. I was not on that committee, so, um, I wasn't privy to their interviews. Uh, I know that one of the, one of the companies that they interviewed was, uh, local. And this company had by far more experience in building a justice building, which included all the security that's necessary, uh, courts, you know, blending in with the police department. And the committee, I'm not sure who was on the committee, Mike Davis, uh, Jay Kovak, Captain Kovak, Mary Beth, and Chief Bradley were on the committee. And they chose this company out of Kansas City with a partner in, in Little Rock.
My second thing is thirty million dollars is a lot of money. And I would hate for us to, uh, next year, ask for an additional ten million or an additional fifteen million. So, you know, in, in my mind, it's thirty million, and that's it. We're not going over thirty million. That's it.
I hope you're right.
Well, if we tell them, then if they, they can't do it, then we'll find somebody that can do it for thirty million. That's a lot of money.
I wanted it to be twenty.
Well, I did too.
Y'all know I don't like borrowing money. Anybody else, Ms. Ross?
This thirty million, does this include the half a million for the purchase of the armory? Is included in that thirty million?
And the demolition.
And the demos included in that? Does this include all the furnishing, all the...
I think it does.
And, this is, this is everything?
Yeah.
I mean, I need to know that before we vote on that. I mean, this includes all the wiring, all the internet, all the computer systems, security systems. This is it. This is the whole...
It's, it's their best professional guess. You know, I mean, I, I can't say it's gonna be thirty million, but they know how much it's gonna cost to tear it down. They know how much we paid for the, for the armory. Uh, they know how, how much, um, is a good ballpark on FFNE. Uh, they don't know how much equipment that we've got now that we're gonna move over there. So, we could save some money if we moved some of our equipment that we have, uh, at PD now. Um, but I, I, I mean, worst-case scenario, you know, we can make this thing smaller, uh, if we had to. Uh, the judges are willing to work with us. If we got into a position where we had to, uh, we could probably do with one courtroom instead of two. Um, so, there's a lot of things that we could work on. If you had to, you could probably, uh, leave training where it is, uh, but we don't want to. Uh, so, we got options out there. Uh, but, I mean, just because we agree with this architectural contract doesn't mean we agree to build it. You know, so, all we're doing is saying, "You guys go to work. Let's draw some, make some drawings and get something where we can bid it out." And then, once we bid it out, if it's twenty-eight million, great, and we will go. And if we can borrow the money, great. And if it's thirty-five million, we go, cry uncle. You know, uh, we'll have to make another plan.
Okay. Ms. Dowd, the floor?
Sure.
Okay. And one of the questions on, on the two courtrooms is, how many days a week do we have court?
Every day.
Every day? I mean, but, I mean, all day, every day?
Oh, no. No. And I think that they could adjust that. There, there's several logistical reasons. I don't remember now where all of them were. I think where we are right now, Danny, or we, or Mike, uh, are we with one big courtroom and one small?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, that's where we are right now. But, you know, I mean, during a, during a busy day, we'll have, we'll fill that courtroom up, uh, overflowing. So, we're thinking about maybe, you know, the two judges will work with us to make it as reasonable as they can. If, if you wanna see what undersized courtrooms and court facilities are, go down there right now, any day, and you'll see it, that all those clerks are on top of each other, and, and, you know, they process... How many people you think on Mondays are in that courtroom? Two or three hundred?
Yes.
Yeah. And then, you got plain arraignment and everything else. Yes, sir.
So, Mayor, the marching orders for that, that firm is going to incorporate all of what we have now as outlier buildings? The only outlier buildings we'll have after this facility is complete is the substations?
Correct.
That's it.
Right. We're gonna move, we'll move, we'll move the detective bureau into the main building. We'll move training into the main building. Um, all of courts and administration, chief's office, all will be in the main building.
Okay.
Correct.
Oh, question. So, uh, this, this is an agreement that basically says, before they get started, uh, we're doing an agreement that, that says that we need to spend, we can spend up to thirty million dollars for this project. Is that what we're agreeing to now?
Right.
And then, and then you said something about getting some designs and then hard bid it. So, uh, so, there's two, so, we're agreeing for thirty million, and then we're gonna...
We're, we're agreeing to hire the architects. All we're doing right now. Just like you're gonna build a house and you, you hire a home build, uh, home designer?
See if you can afford it.
Yeah. Design me a house and see if I like it, and see if I can afford it.
So, okay. But, but then, after we get these designs and everything, then we get, then we get to go do some competitive bidding.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay.
Exactly. This'll be a, a popular building, building. Uh, you know, I thought about, when, when it got so high, I thought we were gonna have to do a construction manager to help us value-engineer it. But I think now with these guys, they've built so many of these, that I feel very comfortable in allowing them to draw the plans, uh, without the help of a construction manager, and then hard bidding it. And I think staff agreed with me.
There's savings there. That's good.
Yeah.
So, with this, excuse me, with this resolution, or, we're, we're telling the architect that we've got thirty million dollars to spend, including your fee, and we need the bid to come in at thirty million dollars, or we're gonna have to make some other arrangements.
Now, y'all, y'all are gonna be able to vote on stuff like this two or three times. So, I mean, all this is, is just hiring the architect. Period. You know, it's gonna cost us some money, so, you know, I mean...
We're putting ourselves on the hook for another ten million that, that we don't have.
Right. Exactly.
And so, where's that coming from?
Well, at the next meeting, I think, the next meeting, you'll get a chance to vote for us to go to see how much it would cost for us to borrow fifteen million dollars, ten of which would be for police department, five of which would be for the airport. And we'll, we'll have some plans, uh, you know, a business plan, if you will, for the airport, uh, by that time. Yes, ma'am?
But we don't really have thirty million because we've already spent some money, correct?
Right.
So...
Yeah.
Even less.
Okay. All we're doing is hiring an architect. We got a motion. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-18-234, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution adopt, adopting updated salary scales for North Little Rock Police Department officers and supervisors.
Move for adoption. We have an amendment.
You have a second?
Second.
On amendment?
The amendment, there was a typo in the pay scale at the bottom.
Um, on attachment B, um, the last line, um, says five sixty-five per month. Uh, the correct figure is five eighty-five per month. So, the amendment would be to change that number to five eighty-five.
I'll make that amendment.
Okay. How about a second?
Second.
On the motion to amend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Move for adoption is amended.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-18-235, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution adopting a budget for the 2019 fiscal year for the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second.
All right. I think, do we have some amendments, Karen?
Yes, sir.
No, sir. I did put a spreadsheet at everyone's desk to show them the differences between the version that was handed out as the first draft and the version that is attached, uh, this evening. The total difference is six hundred and ninety-three thousand nine hundred and five dollars, and there's an explanation of those items, uh, the bulk of which is the salary increases for the police department.
Okay. So, we don't need to amend anything?
No. The exhibit that is included in the budget has these numbers.
Do we need to amend any exhibit?
No. The exhibits find the spreadsheets just for explanation purposes.
All right. So, we got a motion and a second on the budget. Any questions? Comments? On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-18-236, Mayor Smith.
Let me just, well, thank all of our staff and department heads that worked tirelessly since August, putting this thing together. So, thank you very much for your hard work. Okay, on thirty-six, two thirty-six?
A resolution adopting a budget for the 2019 fiscal year for the North Little Rock Electric Department.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Questions, comments? On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-18-237, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
How about a motion?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call public hearing. Anybody here to speak on the, uh, grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances and their liens? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance is O-18-94, Council members Ross and White.
Please call it.
I'm about to get there. An ordinance granting a waiver of sections thirteen point one and thirteen point four of the zoning ordinance to allow a reduced number of off-street parking spaces for property located at Lot Ten and Lot Eleven, Block Four, Spring Hill Development in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move away the read, all readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend all readings?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh, move for adoption. I'd like to make a comment.
You have a second?
Second.
Uh, I just wanna say that, you know, when we have these large parking lots, and, you know, they sit there empty half the day, and I just wanna thank, uh, Mr. Powell, working with this, uh, sharing. It's two companies sharing, but they also provided us, which we asked for, a bill of assurance that runs with the property, so that, that we don't get into this after the property's sold. So, it was a great...
This, this is a great, great addition, that area. Manoch, thank you very much for being the great developer that you are.